It's called the meeting order at 5:35. We'll round up. Alright. So... Alright, can I borrow that real quick? It's not pulling up. Alright, so we'll start with, um, starting now per RSA 18974. If anybody has any public input throughout the meeting, just raise your hand. Let us know. Any things along those lines. Uh, is there any announcements that anybody has?
No announcement, but a question or an ask if there's any way we could move the agenda around and do the principal reports first so that the teachers here to present could present? And then we could get into the budget and financial talks?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so, believe it or not, our winter reporting period, uh, report card period is almost here, which is amazing. Our semester one ends barring any snow days, um, right, barring any snow days, ends on January 19th. And our Alma progress reports will be sent electronically to families on, uh, January 26th. A quick facilities update, uh, the three of us met, Andy and Renee and I met last week, really to update the board on the roof. Uh, everything is ready to roll. We are scheduled, um, barring any weather delays for the weekend, sorry, the week of April break. Um, it'll be, it'll take, uh, around three days for them to complete the work. And there will be no students in the building, so it should not affect anything while we're on break. Our current enrollment numbers are continue to stay at 118, uh, 12 in kindergarten, 23 in first grade, 23 in second grades, 12 in third grade, 21 in fourth grade, and 19 in fifth grade. Uh, community events, uh, we are excited that, um, our students finally found out, uh, back in November and auditioned for and are rehearsing for the Lion King kids. Uh, the official dates now, um, are March 22nd and 23rd. We also have Paige Tool, our school counselor here today. As I said, um, we've been working, uh, for now three years on our MTSS work. And, uh, for that first year, um, was really our MTSS tier one team prepping for year number two, which year number two was last year, and we just focused on tier one supports academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally for all of our students. And the plan was for, uh, us to branch off into the tier two, tier three area. And Paige, um, has taken over facilitating, uh, that area and that team. So she is here today to do a wonderful presentation on what MTSS tier two and three look like here at school and, uh, some of the changes that we've made, uh, that are going to, um, hopefully better explain what it really looks like here and what interventions look like here and what the team looks like here. Paige, take it away.
Thank you. So again, I'm Paige Tool, I'm the school counselor. And I, I want to share with you just this system that we've had in place pretty much all along that I've been here and many years before that, um, the multi-tiered systems of support. And this team used to be called by another name, but, um, over the summer we did some work and, um, we branded, I guess. And, um, came up with a support system, a process, resources for our teachers to help our students. Uh, so in this presentation, it shouldn't take too long, it's a quick overview. Um, but the things that I'll go over is just what MTSS is, um, what exactly is involved in our student teacher assistance team, um, breaking down what would happen in each tier, and then also the stat process, um, what that would look like step by step. So to begin with, just an overview of MTSS, like I said, it's something that we've had in place for a while. Um, as we've started rolling it out and calling it STAT, there are some questions and, you know, it's something that's always been there, but now with a new name and a more clear, um, open approach, we're communicating with families and being consistent with how we're following through, um, in that communication. So MTSS is basically a whole child approach. It's equity in our schools. It's how we make sure that every student gets what they need. And it's not just academics, it would be in many different areas. So, um, you know, academics would be math literacy, um, if a student is, uh, an English language learner. But we also look at their attendance. Are they coming to school on time? Are they getting here consistently? What are their social and emotional and behavioral skills looking like? How does that impact them in the classroom and making friends and how they're communicating with other kids? And speaking of communication, we also look at speech and language. How is a student able to express themselves? What are they taking in? If there's any sort of auditory processing, we could look at that as well. We talk about health and wellness. If there are certain chronic illnesses that are affecting students, um, if there are hygiene issues that are coming up that we can help them with, things that would affect them throughout the day, we want to be able to support that as well. And also occupational therapy, that would be things like handwriting or coordination. You know, how they process their environment and, um, executive functioning skills can also be under OT, but also under SEL and lots of different areas as well. Looking at specifically our student teacher assistance team, so we call it STAT. And, um, the name is kind of, you know, coming from the phrase of STAT, like, you know, getting to something quickly. We want to make sure that we're addressing student needs and we're also making sure that we're supporting the student for sure, but also the teacher and the staff that are involved in the process. So our intervention team utilizes the experience of all the team members. We create, we meet, we create a plan, um, follow through on that plan. It's tailored to the needs of the student and making sure that the staff are equipped to, um, support that student on the plan. And as I said, all those areas of MTSS that we can support areas of need, it's how we support through the STAT process too. So whatever they're struggling with, whatever they have concerns around, whatever they have a lack of skill, we will talk about it, figure out a plan, and execute it. Again, STAT is more than just supporting the student. Of course, the student is our priority, but we want to make sure that the staff, the teachers, are feeling comfortable and confident in these plans that we're creating for them. We want to make sure that they're actually possible so that if they're struggling with something, a staff member, any staff member can make a referral. That's something that we saw that was a barrier is, you know, a student might be performing well in one area of the building, but then maybe in a UA or in a different area, recess, lunch, in those social skill areas, there might be a deficit that a different teacher is seeing. So any staff member can make that connection and can make that referral so that we can get students and teachers, any staff, the support that they need with helping students. So pretty much everybody is a staff member. So all students or all staff are responsible for supporting students and they're an active role in the process. The classroom teacher is the point person. They're the ones that will, you know, reach out to the parent or guardian and let them know that we're starting this process, um, giving them updates throughout the way of, you know, what's happening, what the plans are, um, what the data showing and any next steps. And then the parents are part of the process in supporting and advocating for their student. However, since our STAT meetings are a general meeting, part of our every school, like just regular schedule, parents and guardians are part of the meeting, however, they can always call for a meeting and a conference with that teacher and any other team members. The STAT coordinator, that's myself, so I am the one that, you know, gets the referrals from the teachers. Um, I help them with the process, um, make sure that all the people are at the table that need to be to talk about that student. Our principal, the administrator, just oversees the process and making sure that we're, you know, doing all the right things, communicating in the right way. Um, and then the interventionists, that's all of those people with their areas of expertise that are coming to the table and, um, executing that one. The different tiers of MTSS, we have tier one, that's the bottom of the triangle. So that would be, the hope is that all students would be successful at this area, but we can see that about 80 to 90% tend to be successful and that other students might need those tier two or tier three supports. But tier one means universal. Everybody gets what's happening in tier one, everyone has access to it. And then tier two, um, the goal of the MTSS system is that about 5 to 10% would be receiving tier two services or, um, it would basically be supplementary targeted interventions. And I'll get into what that might look like, some examples. Tier three is more intensive, it's individualized, but still in intervals, about a six to eight week process each time. And then at the top would be special ed. So there's a bit of a differentiation between those tiers and then special ed can be more, um, limited. It's specialized, it's long-term, you know, IEPs over three years, change evaluated. Academic supports, this is just examples of what it might look like at each tier. So like I said, tier one, it's something that all students have access to. Tier two might be a smaller group or more individualized support. Tier three could be a more intensive instruction, it could be more frequent. They might end up with an individual plan at that point. And then special ed would be a different process, be referred to special education evaluation. And if they qualify, they would receive an IEP. And again, examples of what, uh, social emotional learning supports would look like. Tier one, we have our MTSS BE, so that's multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. We have, um, our cool expectations, the King Fisher expectations we love. We have, um, the cooldown corner in every single space in the building. We use second step as our SEL curriculum. Tier two would be supplementary, small groups, maybe individual sessions with a student. Tier three, again, more intensive, more frequent, and an individual plan might come up in that area. And then again, a student could receive SEL supports through a special education. Behavior supports, similar to SEL, but a little bit different. Tier one, we have the expectations for everybody. We have cool cards to help with positive reinforcement. Tier two would be potentially a behavior plan, supporting students in specific strategies, strategies and tools. Tier three, again, more, uh, an intensive behavior plan, um, an individual plan, um, might be, you know, more than just that particular area of the cool expectations, it might go beyond that. And then again, students could receive behavior supports, the VCPA supports through IEP. OT, just some examples, all students in tier one receive the proper seating or are working on getting the proper seating for everybody. They may have access to fidgets, to the cooldown corner tools, headphones. Lots of our classrooms use the zones of regulation. Tier two would be more so the OT, the occupational therapist consulting with that classroom that has specific needs, could be small groups or individualized work. Again, tier three, more frequent or individualized, but the special education plan would be OT services, pull-up services, push-in services, um, to really tackle what their area of needs is. Speech and language supports, all of our classrooms have the Red Cat audio system, little microphone. So it helps the teacher with communication clearly and as well for the students to hear them. Tier two, it might be screenings and these small groups. Tier three, again, that theme, it's more intensive, it's, um, you know, more individual, but special education plan would become that specialized instruction, um, having the supports with those speech and language services and any other combination that they might need. I know this is repetitive in each area. It's hard to get into the nitty gritty, but generally, this is what we see. And same thing with health and wellness supports, we can, all students have access to the health office, but if there is a need that's coming up, there might be an individual plan or individual consult, consultation between the nurse and that teaching staff to make sure they're getting what they need. In the special ed area, there may be a health plan that's applicable or screenings that they support within the, um, evaluation process. As I said before, we're making sure that we're really transparent with our teachers, with our staff, with our families about what the referral process looks like. I won't read all of this for you, um, but this is something new and different than what we've had before so that teachers know exactly where to start and where to go based on what's happening. So if they have a student that is still having concerns despite the tier one services and supports that are already in place for them, you want to compare, is it different? Is it more significant than other students? Have they tried things? Have they gathered data? If it's still not seeming to work with what that teacher has in their own toolbox? And then if not, then they would, um, push forward to a staff referral so we can all meet together, talk about how we can support that student and support the teacher. There's also an intervention process for the team members of STAT. So when we come together, what that looks like, um, we need every six to eight weeks to talk about the plan, to communicate updates, to take data, to keep data, um, just constantly in communication with each other. And then, last but not least, the intervention process for families of students, what they can expect. So they would be in communication with the classroom teacher. The STAT referral shouldn't be a surprise. You know, the parents should be aware of the concerns that have been going on and there should be an open dialogue leading up until that point. And then the classroom teacher is that point person to just let the family know what's going on, what we're doing. Parents have the option to opt out if they would prefer their student to not participate in a plan. And like I said, the parents aren't directly involved in the meetings, however, can always request a meeting if they want to have, um, more information and more of a dialogue with the team members. So yeah, I think that's about it. I know it's a lot and, um, but we're really excited about it. We feel like this transparency and this openness and this really clear system is going to benefit our students and our teachers significantly, so. Any questions?
What do you do if a parent didn't cooperate?
That's their right. We try to meet with them, um, help them understand the reason why a teacher might have a concern. It's a judgment free, so we're not, there's no blame on the parents for any reason why we would make a referral. And sometimes that helps, sometimes bringing them in, um, showing them examples of work and why we're concerned. And we just, honestly, we just keep the line of communication open. But if they really don't want us to move forward, we try to respect that.
So if you have a challenge with a behavior issue, for example, that they were running away in the classroom and you decided to use this process?
Well, there's still-
And the parents didn't do it, what do you do? You got problems?
Well, the parents would have to agree to an intervention that pulled them out of their classroom and put them in an alternative learning environment for a period of time. Parents doesn't necessarily have to agree with, um, um, student code of conduct or, or expectations for East Kingston students. So, you know, if a classroom teacher has a certain level of expectations and they respond to a behavior in a certain way, they don't need parents permission to create that sense of community in the classroom. If the behavior is rising to the point where Paige is getting called off a lot, there's going to be a conversation home with the parents and sort of talk about what we can do and sort of what we can agree on and not agree on and how we respond to certain behaviors. Because remember, we have to keep all the kids in the classroom safe. So the, in that sense, parents don't have, they can't say, well, I don't, I don't want you to ever blank i- if it's about keeping the rest of the kids in the classroom safe. So it's a, it's a, it's really just helping parents understand that. The parents permission really comes out, I want to pull them out for six weeks to go to the reading lab to do some intention, intensive phonological awareness. They're going to leave their classroom, they're going to go get this intensive intervention. That's really where parents, like, I don't want them to ever leave their classroom. I'm not comfortable with that. That, that's kind of where the rubber rides the road. When it comes to responding to behaviors, it's, uh, the school has a little bit more discretion around that piece, if that makes sense. But always inform the parents. We'd always want to be communicating with parents either way.
Excellent, Paige, thank you.
I have a question, like, how long would a student be in each stage? Like, when do they move on? I just wanted to get the-
I think what we usually try, I guess that's what I didn't talk about. But we, when we have a student in a tier two or tier three intervention, we usually do at least two or three rounds of intervention. And a round would be about six to eight weeks. So within that plan, it could be, you know, they're receiving, reading intervention for X amount of times, X amount of minutes, um, and we just make sure that we're consistent with that plan. Every single round, we're meeting as a team and just looking at the data and seeing if there's improvements. And after a few rounds, it may be, the decision may be made that either they're making some progress, we'll continue in this direction, or we might need some more information on how to support them and it could be a referral to a special education evaluation.
Okay. Or they would go back into the regular classroom setting?
Yeah, so if they're, if they're successful, and we've seen that from some, you know, intensive supplementary supports, that they are making improvements, then it may be, um, that they don't need those tier two or tier three interventions anymore.
I think the biggest thing to take away from the MTSS, um, work that SEU 16 is doing is decisions should really be made on the student's data and their, and their response. And sometimes it's, are we collecting the correct data? Are there, are we in the correct intervention? So sometimes before we even move or decide we're going to go from tier two to three, we're going to have those types of conversations. So, um, try to move away from like thinking of, well, we, we did interventions for six weeks, now we have to go to special ed. Well, no, because your intervention's working really well. And actually, you've pigeonholed an area that the student didn't get exposed to for a variety of reasons and it's working. So that's really, it's really about the questions you're asking and the data you're, you're collecting and analyzing when you move up the tiers. It's got to be more intensive data, more intensive analysis of the student's behaviors, learning behaviors, math, reading, and those pieces. And then if you address those, did the student learn them or are they making progress? So I think that's really the, the thing we want to think about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a question. Does, this might be hard to answer, but is it generally pretty close to what tier the majority of students are in compared to, like, state evaluations that we're getting where we're at meets or exceeds? Where we're starting to see that expand and starting to see some of the, um-
I don't know if we, if you correlated that with your new MTSS tiers. I would, I would say the tiers do not match with the percentage of students identified in special ed. So like, tier three really is your five, 5% of your population. We have more than 5% of your students identified with special education. Special education goes through all tiers depending on the student.
Okay.
But I don't know if we cross-reference it to the proficiency data from the SAS, but that would be an interesting activity to think about.
Alright. Alright, so we've done announcements, chairs reports, no, principals reports, not chair report. Uh, let's, we have no more announcements? Making sure? Uh, let's go to business and financials. Molly?
Michelle brought the manifest. Before we dive into the budget, we also brought the current year financial in your board cap. Um, there is a large expense added, but that was for the roof. So I know there is discussion on if one of you's a trust member, but we're not talking about it yet. So you will see that expense on the report.
Actually, Molly, we made a motion at the last meeting to-
To take it out? But, oh, I thought you were going to do it at the end if only they needed it? Or are you definitely going to take it out?
We made a motion to-
Because we wanted to get it started sooner rather than later.
So we, I mean, we can start it. It's just showing as an expense here, just like how we did last year with the special ed, um, tuition. We got it started and it shows an expense because we have to expend the money and then we asked the trust for it back.
Okay.
But you can't send it back to the trust. So at the end of the year, if you have a large fund balance, you can't then send it back.
Okay.
So I was thinking that you wanted to wait to see how much you really wanted to draw down on the trust because if you do have a fund balance, then you might not want to take as much out of the trust.
I think that's true.
Yeah. That's the plan to see. Yeah, the, so the overall goal of it was next year's budget.
Correct.
We wanted, we wanted that to not be reflected in it.
Right.
And so if, if we can get away with not using the trust and still have it covered, is that what you're talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay. So either way, if we have access, we use it to cover. If not, we'll give it to the trust.
We only ask for the balance in the trust that we don't have.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that's the overall goal that we all talked about, right?
I didn't interpret it that way. I interpreted it that we are going to ask for like the full amount and then if we have leftover money, that would just offset the tax rate and it would just stay as is.
It will offset the tax rate if you have extra money at the end of the year.
Yeah, so you're-
But you can't send it back to the trust.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I thought we were using the sergeant trust because it was like a safety issue. So that money is available for that. So that's what I thought we left it at.
Sorry, in the last meeting I had COVID, so I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You were not here. Michelle is here.
So Michelle stood in, so I wasn't here because I was really sick at home.
Yes, so that's the way I, is that correct, Michelle?
I mean, we can do it either way.
I mean, we, we have to, you know-
I thought we were, I thought we were using the sergeant trust to pay for the roof once we figured out what the buzz, budget was because we didn't want to use our money.
We definitely didn't want to put in next year's budget.
Correct.
Right. And we, and there is a need to have it done.
Immediately.
Immediately. So I, I thought we were expending the funds from the sergeant fund to pay for the roof, but it's, but this is a decision the board makes, not me. But that, uh, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I thought and, um, Andy had made the motion because of the way we had to do it.
So let's, let's talk about the two different ways that we do it. If we take, take it out of the full trust now and we have access, we can just send that back to the taxpayers?
So if you pay, well, so if you pay for the roof now, that's going to cover what's the cost of the roof. But if you end up in a sizable fund balance at the end of the year, that would go to offset the tax rate.
The plan is for it to be done at the last week in, in April. So I, I think by that time, we'll have a really good idea on what the fund balance looks like. So align, it aligns up really well with what could potentially be in the fund balance or taking the full amount out of the trust.
So either way, either way, if you take the full amount of the trust or not the full amount of the trust, it's not next year's budget, it's in this year's budget. It's just, when do you want to draw down on the trust? Do you want to do it now and take the whole roof out? Or do you want to wait a little while? You're still going to pay for it, you've already paid part of it. That's why you see the actuals in here. And let's just say you have savings on other areas that you didn't expect savings on. You don't have to take the full amount out of the trust. You can preserve that in the trust. It's up, it's up to you now.
I like to keep the accounting like tighter and like all separated so that we can see like year after year, like what we're sending back. So if we're using that for like a roof, it's not really a true number of what we've saved because then that will help us project what we need to budget, like moving forward. So.
Either way, I'm happy to do it either way. We can ask for the money. We have to prove that we spent it.
Do you have an opinion?
If we use it, it will be like not a lot going back, you know? So it just-
My, remembering the conversation, we had talked about where the budget was going percentage-wise and we had talked about it being around seven and getting it down to 4.1 or those numbers are in my head right now. And that was because we were taking it out of the sergeant fund because that we weren't trying to be that high? Am I thinking of something completely different?
For next year, no, you're right.
No, you're right.
Take it up next year's budget.
So either way, it's not next year's budget, we've already taken it down.
So we did bring the budget down by taking it out. Now, the decision is, do you want to expend the money from the sergeant fund now? Or do you want to make that decision in April when you know how much is left in un, um, the unfund, the unspent?
The unassigned fund balance.
What is it called?
Unassigned fund.
Unassigned, unassigned fund balance, which means it's, it's left over. So that's really what's on the table.
And we can't give the money back to the trust fund.
No.
So we really need to wait to see how much we can expend and then whatever's left over, we take out of the trust fund.
You could do it that way?
Or we could do a full trust fund.
Full trust fund and then whatever money is left over, it goes back to the taxpayer. Full trust fund, and then whatever money is left over, it goes back to the taxpayers.
Yes.
A few years ago, we had a very similar situation with our parking lot. We needed it, it was just horrible. And we had these similar conversations and we waited until the spring because we, we did have money in that unassigned fund balance that worked out. We were able to take from, to do the parking lot. And we didn't dip into the trust. We were going to pay for fully out of the, the unassigned fund balance.
Those are very different circumstances because a lot of that was like some COVID money and some state money and a lot of different savings. So I feel like this is kind of like, you know, we could be looking at a much smaller amount that we're sending back. So I feel like the trust is there for like safety improvements. And I feel like we need a roof. And so my vote would be to use the Sargent funds for like the whole amount and send whatever we have left over to the taxpayers.
And we're talking about seventy-six thousand dollars, just so we're, just so that was, I know the estimates went from a hundred and two, but I think...
It was seventy-something.
Yeah, it was like...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, give or take five thousand for what, it's something that happens while they're doing the roof. So, just so we're all clear, it's about seventy-six thousand, either way.
Yeah, I just feel it's like about safety and well-being, and that's what that trust is for. And we projected that we would need a roof, but it happened a little sooner than we had projected. And so now we're kind of...
This is a question for the three of you. The, the, the plan over time would be eventually, right? When we take money out of the trust to start replenishing it again? Especially the maintenance trust in case we have boilers go out. So wouldn't you be possibly looking at unassigned fund balance to replenish trust?
Well, this is, the maintenance trust is separate from the Sargent trust. So the maintenance trust that we have is for like...
Well, this is Sargent, you're right.
Yeah, so the, so the maintenance is like, say, the boiler breaks and we need that fixed.
Yes, yes.
Yep. And so the Sargent is like that separate one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I hope I said Sargent, but...
Yeah, you have that. You did, and I, I worried the maintenance, that's my fault.
Yeah. And I think that trust has like two hundred and something thousand in it.
About two fifty.
Two fifty.
This feels like you're working something in your head. What's, what's your thoughts?
Why do you do that, Andy? I mean, work it in my head? Well, I mean, so what, what's left? We've already paid some of it, so what's left? It's like forty, forty-something is left? We've already paid for some of it.
We had to put the down payment down.
So what happens is you have, you have to pay for things first.
Right.
The operating budget has to be...
And then the trust reimburses you.
Correct. So you're seeing the expense here. And the question is on the table is, do we want to go to the trust for the full amount? Or do we want to wait and only ask the trust for what the operating budget can afford? And preserve the trust? That's, either, either one is fine with me.
Or wait and see in April?
I mean, we're like, you know, we're going to go over the budget. We're looking at an increase of seven point four seven. Like, I say we send as much money back to the taxpayers as we can and try to go for that trust, which is what it's there for. I think this is a pretty big item.
And, and that was my question. So when we had discussed it, we were saying if we took the, if we took the money out of the trust, the seven point four went down.
That seven point four includes, that seven point four is not the proposed budget. That is the proposed budget plus if the collective bargaining agreement is...
Okay.
Voted on. So the proposed budget change is four point one nine.
But I think what you might be trying to say is that it will offset the funds that we need to raise for the next, for this budget. So this is still going to be an increase, but we're going to be asking less from the taxpayers. Whereas we'd be sending more back to them.
Yeah, it, it doesn't necessarily change this. Really what it would change is that, I mean, because our, our budget for '24 is already set.
Right.
So, and our budget for '23 is already set as well. We have, so there's how much we budget for everything, which is what we vote and vote for.
Yep.
And there's how much we actually spend. That, excuse me if I am explaining this incorrectly, right? If there's extra, we can vote to put that to the taxpayers, right? Or we just, it goes back to the taxpayers? Yeah.
If it doesn't go to the trust fund?
If it doesn't go to the trust funds. So, so we're potentially looking at an extra seventy going back to the taxpayers.
And so if we can wait till April just to make decisions, why does that have to be done now?
It would, I mean, that's, so that's the thing is, we'd be looking at essentially taking that, taking the trust fund and that money would be going to the taxpayers, more or less.
Yeah, so, so right now, in your current year financial, in the board pack is included, right now you have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of remaining expense. Okay? And, yeah, and that includes us paying for the part of the roof out of this. Now, if we choose to do the whole roof out of the trust, what happens is we draft a nice little letter to the trustee and trust funds. I attach all the receipts. And we say, please reimburse us this amount of money. And then they send us a check. And then you're going to see that on the revenue side over here, or we relieve the expense. The question is just how, do we want to do it right now? Or because you have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of remaining expense, do you want to not expend the full trust amount?
We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't get the final invoice until the work is completed, correct? So you wouldn't be able to send receipts to the trust until the work is completed.
Right, yeah, and yes.
And we already, you already made the motion before anything happened to expand a certain, up to a certain amount from the Sargent fund for the roof.
Yes.
So that part has happened. Whether you decide now or April to do unassigned balance this much, this trust fund this much, either way, it doesn't matter. I think what was important is that you already opened up the door that we could take up to this amount of money from Sargent to pay for the roof.
So if you want to take the full amount, then I'm going to throw in that offsetting revenue to bring up your fund balance.
Yeah. Because what I'm, what I'm worried about is, you know, we still have one boiler that, you know, needs repair. And it's like, what if like February, the boiler goes down? Then we can use that, some of that hundred and thirty-eight that we're going to send, you know, for that. And then we don't have to take money out of the maintenance fund. So it's just, yeah.
But that's also a reason to defer this decision until you're closer to the end of the year. Because then you will have all the information on the table about any other maintenance issues. A student could move in, that could be expensive to educate. Like, there's a lot of things that could happen in my experience between now and April that could be expensive. You never know. You never know what's going to happen. So do, do you want to make that decision now? Or do you want to say, when I see the financials in April, I'm going to decide? It's really up to you guys.
So, my opinion on this is, we have our yearly budget. If we can get a roof done within our yearly budget and not have to break glass on the Sargent funds, I would rather do that. That, that is, that is my opinion.
Can I just ask a question, Andy?
Yeah.
But if the trust fund is there for this purpose, why aren't we using it? I guess, why not use it? That would just be my question. Like, if we can save the roof from the funds, why, why not use it? Is it because if we have the budget already here, it's already been voted for, it's, we're safe? I get that. To me, that's tucked in pretty nice and neat. And we're not expending any more than what we've asked for because that is something I don't want to do. But if it's there, why wouldn't we use it? So that, I just want to know that the dip, like...
So here, here would be my argument towards it. If we had a similar situation some future down the line and we're looking at our budget and we're at or going over, and something comes up, like a roof or something big, we still have our trust fund available that we haven't dipped into in times where we're not up against the wall on something. So right now, we have our budget, we're able to do it within our budget without touching those funds.
The safety fund.
Yeah.
The safety net.
I mean, there could be another year where, I mean, inflation seems to be going under control, but say it runs out of control, our food expenses go through the roof, we're over budget, and something else happens.
But we could use the Sargent fund for food, could we?
The Sargent fund, the Sargent, the maintenance...
Right, I understand.
The Sargent fund, the parameters were very broad.
Broad?
They were very broad. That's what the Sargent fund was attractive. The maintenance fund, not so broad, special ed is just as it's described.
I mean, you don't have to decide tonight because, I mean, it's only encumbered. It's not actually spent yet. So we just have to decide when we actually...
And how much is in the Sargent fund?
Two fifty.
Two hundred and forty-seven?
Yes. And I agree with Kirsten with what she said, you know, why would we not use it for the circumstance? And then I'm thinking about the roof, and it's usually like, the estimate's usually a plus or minus five percent. And we're not going to know what they're going to get into until they get up there and pay that roof back. It could be an additional twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, there's a lot of things that could come up with. We're doing this in April, like, what if this potentially is going to go an extra week because they run into things and we can't open for school? You know, there's just different things that, you know, we might accrue expenses.
But that's where our vote to expend out of the Sargent fund as needed has already allowed us to account for that. To where, at the end of the school year, if this puts us over budget or we need to do it, do something to get with back when the budget gets available there.
Okay. So, yeah, so why don't we just wait? Looks like, it looks like we're for Sargent and you might not be, but let's just push it and see how it goes. But like you said, we already have that motion.
I think, I think being able to get to it is what's the most important piece.
Right, right. And so, so right now, it's just encumbered. We haven't sent any checks out the door yet. And so we, we'll just need to decide as the time gets closer, do we want, how much do we...
How much do you want to get reimbursed for the Sargent fund?
How much do you want to be reimbursed for exactly? So, right now, it shows us a...
And can, can we decide that? Like, if, say, the budget is fifty percent and Sargent fund is fifty percent? Like, can we decide the number?
Yeah, we, it just has to be less than what we actually paid.
Okay, right.
Or equal to.
Equal to, yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's just really the big increase, what's showing expense-wise because we added the encumbers. And we had to add the encumbers because we had to open up a purchase order for the company to do work with us. And so if we, whatever we want the trust to reimburse, we'll put that as not setting revenue when we get there. But right now, that's the big increase in expense. But did anyone else have any other questions on the other expenses that were added from last month? There was just a few others related to some savings with employee turnover, some for school tuition, Atlantic CPR.
I had a question, Molly.
And field trips.
On substitutes, that line. Are we, I know we had asked if we could keep a separate line or the additional money that we're spending to her is when they have to take over for a classroom teacher? Is that anywhere, has that started?
That's not anywhere in here. That would be, that would have to, I'll have to attach a different report. You won't see that right here.
Okay. I just, I just saw substitutes and I was just curious. I just, I just want to know, like, you know, are we short-staffed? And, you know, what are the percentage of times that we're not finding a sub? And is that affecting, you know, the student's academic day? And what can we do maybe with HR to get more subs in here? Brandon, I know you probably could answer this. And I don't know if things have gotten better, but like, you know, I don't know, like a job fair or, I'm not sure.
We, we have had job fairs, we've had lots of posting. This is not unique to this building. And SAU is not unique to that.
Has it recovered?
Nope. Again, forty percent of the teachers and support staff did not return post-COVID. Forty percent of the work staff. And paras are extremely, we're extremely short in all of it. So, I mean, we did postings in the office, like, short of wearing a sandwich sign and outside East Kingston, I think Brandon's a lot. And HR is definitely, I mean, she loses sleep over this because we are so short-staffed. But I do think it would be good to look at that. And Brandon said it has been happening frequently, where paras are having to cover and get subs to pay. So it would be good for you guys to have that information to look at.
For a teacher, they get the extra pay. Yeah, I'm trying to see if... We'll try, we'll have to figure out the report from A D S to know for that.
Yeah.
Do, do teachers, this could be directly to my school, but do teachers get paid to cover another class? No. Right? So, different schedule. But when you, when a teacher, we try to like piecemeal it together in this kind of crisis shortage that we're having. If you have to cover a class, you know, you give a stipend, like a little stipend for covering that class. So we do a ton of in-house coverage.
I think if the middle school and high school, that's fairly common.
Common, okay, okay.
Teachers in the co-op can get paid to give up a prep period to cover a class?
Exactly, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so Michelle's just looking at, well, Michelle and I will work together on it. And she's thinking it might be a different earning code for when that happens. We just have to run the report by now.
Thank you.
So did anyone else have any questions on the current year financial before we dive into the budget? Okay, awesome. So, also in front of you is a packet of manifests. Hopefully you'll get a chip in that brown folder there. So, we made a little package for you to hopefully kind of break down the budget. And if anyone else wants to copy, there's some reason. So the first page, what we did is we pulled together your budget and your CBA because those essentially are going to become your budget. It just appears on the ballot as two different warrant articles. So warrant article one is going to be what we call the operating budget, your line-by-line budget. And our article two is going to be your CBA. So, when we reviewed the operating budget before, it was higher, but we have since taken out the roof. So it's down to the four point one nine percent. So if you look at the line-by-line detail, which I went over last time, it shows the four point one nine percent. But then, to look at warrant article two, we also put in what the CBA increases for the first year. So, on the ballot, you have to do what's called sambarization. You have to put the cost impact for the first year and then the projected cost impact for the remainder years that the CBA is negotiated for. It's a two or three-year CBA. And then, or four years. And then, for your tax impact, essentially warrant article one and two will be added together. So we did this for you on the page right here. So the total increase would be two hundred and fifty-five thousand and five dollars and twenty cents. Or seven point four seven percent when you add those together. Now, for tax impact, a little bit below that, we did a projected tax impact for you. This isn't exact, but approximate. So, in order to get your tax impact, what you have to do is take the change, which is the two hundred and five thousand divided by the town's valuation, times a thousand. And so that's what this does here. So, we broke it down to say the operating budget was a thirty-six cents per thousand. The CBA is twenty-eight cents per thousand. So if you add those together, it's sixty-four cents per thousand. Okay? Then, on the following pages, I just ran a quick pivot chart on the different sections of the budget to show what makes up that hundred and forty-three thousand dollar change of the operating budget side of the budget. And I think you went over a lot of these last time. And then also, we calculated the default. So since East Kingston is what they call the SB two town, article one is going to have two numbers on it. It's going to have the proposed budget and it's going to have a default budget to say if this article does not pass, then it will go to default. And so the basis of the default is the previous year's budget, which is the current year's budget, so fiscal year '24. And then you have to add or subtract mandatory obligations. And so mandatory obligations are requirements of special education, the SAU assessment, and anything on an active CBA. So since our teachers are in a negotiation right now, they would be, they're all coming in over at current year salaries. And that's all in warrant article number two. And so the paras do not have a CBA. And so, the paras do not have a CBA. Right, so like all, all of their salaries in the default would come over at current year salaries. So you don't see anybody not in a CBA, the salaries don't get included. In addition, a lot of the things that we have multi-year contracts for, like electricity or the buses at first student, the increases for those do not come over. It's not part of the default budget. The only thing that's in the default budget are contracts that were on the ballot as a warrant article. So since the CBA was on the ballot as a warrant article, those are contractual increases. But increases related to electricity or utilities or for student supplies, so we all know going to the store, things are rising in cost. Anything related to inflation is not included. And so that's going to be the difference between your default and your proposed. So, what I did here is I said, okay, your default is three million, five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. The proposed is three million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one. I put on the sheet, what's the difference? Because when people go to the ballot to vote, they're going to see the two numbers. And this is the difference between those numbers. So, first is the non-union salary. And also, you cannot include for non-union people, the GMR for health. You can for people in the union because it's dictated by the CBA, um, but not for non-union. Any supplies and equipment or operational expense due to inflation, it all comes over at current year budget. Transportation, special ed, yes, because that is a requirement by law, but for student, that increase, no. And then food service is a big one, so all that rising cost of food doesn't come over the default. So that is the main differences between the two numbers that people are going to see on the ballot.
And we just have to figure out a way to compensate for that.
So if you were to go to default, then yes, you would have to find a way to operate the school. Because really the voters vote for one number, they don't vote for the individual line item. So Brandon would really have to put on his thinking cap to, um, figure out how to operate the school with the default.
Yeah, okay.
And then, after that is your line-by-line.
The CBA line, the seat, uh, when do we talk about what years two, three, and four look like to everybody? Or is that just when we get to deliberative, that's what we talk about all that?
So we do have to address it in the public hearing because it is going to be a warrant article. It can't be changed because I'm, we've already agreed upon it. We just have to inform the public. So, I mean, we do have that information if we want to talk about it tonight.
I mean, can I just make a public note that the first year's one hundred and eleven, the next year is thirty-four or thirty-five, thirty-four thousand? So, um, it's a jump initially, but it extremely stabilizes, so. And we'll talk about that in the delivery, but I think it's useful to note now. All right, um, do you guys have any questions on the withdrawal line items of the budget?
I just had a question about, um, summer literacy program. In looking at that, I was, uh, hoping to get some information on how many kids we service, what that line item is. Is it salaries?
I can tell you.
Right now it's, um, twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dol- and twenty-five dollars. So, my limited understanding of what the, that program is, how many kids are we servicing? How many staff are, how many staff are we paying? It's a four, four-week program?
Four weeks, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I was just looking for information, um, on that.
Yep, so that, um, just looking at my notes here, summer learning is two teachers, uh, fifty dollars an hour. Uh, one parent professional, twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, the twelve thousand also includes our kindergarten camp, if you do.
Okay.
So that we-
So those two teachers get paid for those couple of days that they come in?
Out of this line as well.
Okay.
Yep, um, so that's, that's where the, and that includes, uh, also a parent to work kindergarten camp. And then our speech pathologist, the screeners, so she's included in that as well.
And how many kids usually, Brandon?
For kindergarten camp, uh, or summer learning?
For the whole thing?
I can, I can look it up if you just give me a couple of minutes.
And, and again, I'm looking, you know, if it's six kids, seven kids, and you have two full-time teachers, that's a, that's a low, low ratio. The kindergarten thing is two, two days, two days, three days?
Um, four days.
Two and a half days?
Two half-days.
Oh, two half-days?
It's, it's, it's two full days.
Oh, it's two full days?
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
It was four half-days, now it's two full days.
Two, two full, so from eight to two or whatever, whatever.
Eight to, yeah, something like that, yeah.
So kindergarten's two full days?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, it's just, it's just something to look at if you're looking at your ratios aggressively. Two full-time teachers with seven kids. If you had a teacher and a parent, that's an easy car. I mean, we don't need to do that tonight, you can get to me.
I'm looking at the monitoring. On a not hard data note, I've known parents have bits in it. And the, the progress was-
Last year we had thirty-five students.
Oh, okay, so yeah, that's, that's, that's a lot.
The progress was substantial.
Do they document that data?
What's that?
So if they, we have thirty-five kids in that summer literacy program.
Yeah.
Entry coming in in July, entrance leaving in August. Do they monitor that, that progress?
Paige is saying yes.
I'm pretty sure, yeah. I mean, I'm not one of the teachers in that way, but-
I don't have access to the progress monitoring right now.
Well, are they using like the progress monitoring that everyone's using, like in school? Like, are they using Acadia, are they using things that they use anyway? So that the kid's data is already in there? And so they're able to see, I mean, they're, they're faculty here. So they should be able to continue using that same measurement so that they can see if there's actual progress.
They have access to that data.
Right.
So they know, they know where they're starting for that first day.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have-
If they do anything at the end?
A true, real-
Reading at the end, okay. But they, but what they do, just as when they make a decision, is they look at the students when they return in the fall, what their data points, and is there regression or did they prevent regression through the summer learning intervention? So there is another data point eventually, I'm not sure, it's August, it might be September.
Yeah, September.
Or late September. Late September, yeah. Yeah, thirty-five kids is substantial.
While we're talking about kindergarten, do we have a projected number yet for how many kindergartners we might have?
Not yet, uh, it can happen for the January meeting.
Okay, cool.
Does, does the thirty-five kids, Brandon, include the ESY or is that a whole, that's a different number?
That's different.
That's a different number?
Yeah. All right.
So does anyone want to make any other changes or is this what we want to take to the public hearing? I don't think you need a formal motion, but just want to make sure.
I got them.
I didn't, I'll look at it again and I could email you if there's something, but, um, you notated the changes. And I looked over that last one really well, so I think we're good.
Okay, great. I'll just check up the manifest when you're done.
Oh, I have to sign them, sorry.
That's okay, I'll just wait till you're done.
Too fast.
All right. Do you guys have any comments about it? All right. Proposed budget, approval of minutes. So we got from November sixth, we've got public and non-public. Does anybody have something?
I do have something, yeah, I have a few things. Just want to make sure I can, let's see. So, um, under public, uh, business and financials, uh, under public, our budget is three million, six hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and five cents. Uh, it says here that the budget is three hundred and sixty-eight, which would be very nice.
We're not so nice for some of the teachers.
Right, well, you know. Hypothetically, if we were. We only, if inflation wasn't so high, yeah. So that's one edit there. And then under Chair's Report, Policy Committee, under one, AC needs to be changed to ADC. And then again, in my motion, the AC is a policy, but ADC is the one that we were referencing.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you as well.
I have a, I have a question. So, uh, in, under, uh, non-public session, it said that we had made a motion to expend up to twelve thousand dollars from the maintenance trust fund?
Yes.
Yes, okay, not Sargent, and I'm going back to two meetings ago with Sargent. Oh, oh, okay. I'm just checking that that's correct.
Thank you for that, this one was for this right here, safety and security.
Yeah, if, if you want to discuss that, we can go to non-public again if you don't remember what we talked about.
No, that, I just want to, I think I'm just getting confused between the two. I do want to go into non-public to talk about some stuff, but I just want to make sure that was coming out of the right trust fund.
Okay.
And I didn't know Sargent was the meeting before, but yes, I would like to discuss that safety and security that we amended to non-public last time and non-public again.
Okay. All right, um, make a motion?
I'll make it, I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes from November fourth, as amended.
All second?
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got Principal's Report. That's done, Chair's Report. Uh, Superintendent Valuation, we are meeting on Thursday in person with Esther. So I'll have more information on the next med meeting. I'll hit safety and security quick. Uh, there's been no additional meetings since the last meeting, so.
All right, Policy Committee, so, uh, there's no policies for you tonight. So, yay, um, so we met and we reviewed ten policies that are going to be in our Joint Board Policy Manual. So we met with Heather, our Director of Human Resources, and Patrick O'Day. They kind of recommended these ten to start with. So you'll see those in January before the next Joint Board meeting. And so all the policies we have right now, it's already here, so they'll be very familiar. We're just editing them and changing a few things to fit the Joint Board. So that, that's all.
Okay, uh, SAU Wellness Committee, I still have not heard, had any communication from the Chair. My guess is that there'll be a, one of the quarterly meetings is coming up, so I need to go check. That'll be on me to go check if it's already established, but I've not heard, we've never made up the last one, so. Um, and Community Engagement Advisory Group, um, I sent out a webinar and curriculum, which is called the Outdoor Learning. It's called the Walk-In Curriculum for the Early Years. And it's based upon, um, outdoor learning classrooms and pathways that kids can take. And there's different situations that you can go and have different stations or different, um, curriculums at different spots along a pathway. And they've done some research on movement, obviously like sensory learning and things like that, things that we already do here at EKES. But what I really found interesting is that they have modules. For exam, for example, Indigenous people was one of the modules that I went into. And it goes into, um, your actual native land that you're working in, and it's a station. And so I sent it to everyone, um, I did not get a response from anyone, so I don't know if anyone went on to the actual, um, uh, webinar. Um, but I have it if anyone's interested in looking at it. It looks really interesting. Um, we have not met, we have our, we have an upcoming meeting, I think in January, correct? So it's slow. I did send this wa- uh, Walk-In Curriculum to Zoe Susie over at the library. She did say she was going to take a look at it. We are going to start recruiting community members for their expertise, uh, hopefully after January. And start looking at what the spring will, what we can do in the spring back there. And then maybe over the summer when their kids are not here. But that's what's in my head right now. So, hoping to get more members, hoping to get community members who can help us with architecture, um, botany. I'll even say curriculum if we have retired teachers who are out there that want to join, uh, the conversation. The second, um, piece is, is I had a conversation with a staff member here about, um, reigniting, I guess. He only said that they've been two in his time here, um, a turkey trot, um, over, uh, Thanksgiving. And really looking at the push, you can push, pull, jog, walk, hop, trot. But I think that would be something that's going to be less intensive than the King Fisher Park Outback. Um, something that can be a little bit more immediate. Um, so I'm going to start investigating a little bit on that also, maybe work with the rec center on that one.
Uh, two things, um, you and I need to set up a date to meet with, uh, the Principal at SSD.
Yes.
Talked to her the other day, about, January, so.
And she remembered?
Yeah, she remembered.
Oh, excellent, okay.
She, um, she just needs to know from us if January works and then she'll try to get it, a meeting set up. So I, I can reach out to her and you and I can connect on a day in January. And then, um, the other thing, when you brought up Turkey Trot, a couple of years ago, our, our in-house wellness team looked at doing, at doing a race. And we started looking at the logistics of it, it involved the police.
Police, yeah.
So, yeah, it didn't go anywhere, it kind of stopped there.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, and I know it's a new police chief, so I want to reach out to our new police chief to take a look at that.
That's where the rec department could come in and help out.
It's Nancy.
Aye.
I don't know what the group's called, there's a group of docents, you may already know this, they're going to schools. And they teach the children about, one of the things is about, um, riptides and sand movement. And a lot of them, they're all trained docents, uh, but some of them are PhDs in different, you know, retired in different areas. Uh, do you know about these people?
No, I don't.
Because my next-door neighbor is one.
Oh, okay.
And, and he's, I can give you his phone number, I can give you the text.
So I, I think Zoe and I have been trying to work on like a flyer. And we're going to start posting them at the library and in different places. And my email will be on there for people to reach out to me if they're interested in, in just joining the conversation as we look at what can happen back there. You know, my vision gets pretty big pretty fast, is what could, what could be going on back there. But, um, I would welcome any conversations about people's expertise and coming in and, and building-
They bring in, I think, like crabs and lobsters and stuff like that.
Okay, so that's ins, like more inside stuff?
Yes, but they may do outside stuff.
They might do, right, okay.
Because I know that they work on the gondola and everything in Portsmouth.
Oh, in Portsmouth, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they may charge, I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
That's okay.
They're, they're very skilled professionals.
Excellent.
Looking for those people.
Yeah, maybe we could incorporate that into like our STEAM program.
Yeah, yeah. And they go to local schools all the time.
Sure, yes. I've never heard of that, just, I mean, we're right near the ocean, we should know about riptides and-
Yeah. Well, there's any variety, any variety.
Yeah, there's different modules that they, they have that they come in and do. Mm-hmm, that's fantastic.
Did I, what was the name of the?
It's called Larry O'Neill.
Larry O'Neill.
I can give you his wife's phone number.
You may be moving soon, you know.
I know.
Now you definitely are. All right, uh, Community Engagement, has that kind of encompassed all that?
That was covered it.
All right, uh, Tiffany?
I have nothing new for Michael.
All right, uh, once again, your goal, I think, is pretty much covered with. Fairly things, uh, my goal, as Brandon said, we met, discussed the roof, um, starting to get a timeframe or a, more grasp on what a five-year plan will look like. And we should have that early next year, maybe? Let's go for that, we'll, we'll have it by the time I'm out of here.
Thanks. Perfect. Excellent. And then I didn't know, um, we skipped over that, so I didn't know if you wanted, when you want to go back to that.
Do you have something about a support staff handbook?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That is, um, so that's in your packet. Uh, you, we included in there what we're currently doing for this year. And then the one that has all the, the red markings on it is the proposed, um, staff handbook for our support staff that is reflected- that is reflected in the proposed budget.
Oh, yes.
So that's, that's the purpose of putting it in there for you to review, um, because it would have, um, budgetary impact. So, and it, and it does explain the, um, the pareline in your budget.
Does it also include, there was stuff discussed through CBA negotiations?
No, no. This is just a support staff. Before I came on board, I know there was a conversation about getting their pay up over a course of time. So that's what this is spelled out for you in the, in the staff handbook.
Okay, that was that.
So it sort of helps, explains the budget line.
Okay, yep. Okay.
And we put it, yeah, we put it on the agenda last month, but we forgot to bring it, so here it is.
Alright, so we got chairs' report done. New business, um, so we need to amend the 2023, 24 calendar. Removing the January PD date.
We have two options. Can, I know you and I, Andy and I have talked about it a little bit, but I've had this conversation at SL, SAU for, at Najia. So, we now know that the building will be used for town voting on January 23rd. Um, so we would like to have that be a PD date and not have students in the building. We had January 12th slated as a teacher workshop day. There, there was discussions around, do we switch and only, and have the 23rd be the 12th day? The feedback from most of the teachers in the surrounding elementary schools was to have both PD, PD days in January and cancel one of them in March. So there are two professional development days on school calendar for March, teacher workshop days. We'd like to, um, scratch the one at the second half of the March and just do January 12th and the 23rd in, um, as PD days. And that, and that's what we're asking, um, your approval to amend the calendar to state that. The reason being is the new, um, report cards and the narratives and the teachers being allowed to have PD and time to really discuss that, to write meaningful, um, narratives and whatnot for parents mid-year. And be, having access to, um, the director of instruction Jill and other, other staff members to support their narrative writing in January.
And so just to clarify, there's no change to the numbers, just shifting around the dates?
Yes, there's no change to the number of PD days that were on the original calendar. It's just moving March to January.
There were two, two March.
Yeah, taking March 29th and moving that to January 23rd.
And the other, the other PD date, so professional learning date is March 14th, which is voting. Right, so that has to stay.
That has to stay.
That has to stay. And progress reports will be sent out on January 26th.
Yeah.
So they have the 19th, well, they have the 12th, they'll have the 12th to write.
Yep, and get some PD and conversations, yep, yep, support.
Okay, and then they would have the 23rd to write.
The 20th, no.
No, the.
Just the 12th.
Just the 12th.
The 23rd, we have planned PD.
Oh, you are, you, oh, you already have something planned, okay.
If the board approves.
Yep.
Moving it, yes.
What are you doing?
Uh, continuing the work that we started with Jill that we were doing on Fridays, the curriculum mapping, um, mostly for all of our, all of our staff.
Launch to like.
Yes, vertically aligning.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, uh, let's see here. I make a motion to, what's the March one?
29th.
29th.
Move the March, cancel the March 29th PD date and, uh, have a March 12th PD date.
That was already there. We want the March, we want.
January 23rd.
January 23rd PD date.
All second. Third.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Vision Summit.
I put a little letter in your, in your, um, board packet just to sort of summarize. Cause there's not a lot to tell except for be on the edge of your seats and wait for a date and can someone volunteer to join the committee for, um, the vision summit around a portrait of our graduate, um, with Dr. Asbell and other members of the committee. So it's really just to be determined.
I'll do it. It's fine. We do it us.
Okay.
It'd be you or I or any person.
Right, so that's just.
Yeah, I'm happy.
I, I hope I have the dates for you in January.
Yeah, as long as I can get the day, I can use it as my own professional learning day.
Great.
Alright, uh, in the collective EKS teachers association collective bargaining agreement. So, um, what all?
So it has, um, we, we didn't go public with it last time because they had not ratified it.
Okay.
So now East Kingston's teachers association has voted to ratify, um, the, um, proposed collective bargaining agreement that, um, the board chair negotiated with them. So tonight we would hope to leave with a motion to agree and put it on the Warren article.
Okay.
And I open it up for discussions and conversations.
Let's start with this. Um, you guys saw, we got a little bit of an overview. Um, we're allowed to discuss.
Yeah, no, now that they've ratified it, you can discuss it, yep.
So, um, I'm going to give a quick overview. Um, let's start with the budget impact. For fiscal year '25, um, there's an increase due, this includes FICA, um, maternity, retirement, all those things, longevity and salary of 11,000, uh, uh, excuse me, 111,000, close to 112,000. Fiscal year '25, '26, it's going to be 34,000. '27 and '28 are about 63 and 62. Somewhere around there. So what this, overall, what this contract does is we ta- we took the base, we just redid the grid from scratch. More or less from scratch. We took the base of the grid and we brought it up to really recognize that in the previous contract, the teachers, um, really took a backseat to this. Also, the other thing that that does is, um, it gives us a higher base when we're looking for new teachers, new young teachers, which, which we have had and we've hired a lot of. The other thing that it does is there was a bunch of discrepancy about as you moved up the pay, your, um.
Steps, steps.
As your steps, thank you. Um, there was a difference in the percentages that it came through. Now it's one percentage all the way down. And then what that ends with is we ended up a little bit lower than many of the towns around as far as the top, most tenured, or tenure doesn't the right words, well, the, the most experienced teachers are a little bit lower than surrounding towns. How that's compensated for is the other thing that we want to promote as a school, as a board, is continuing education. So as you move over in the columns, as you continue to have more professional development and get more degrees and so forth, you get an increase in percentages as you move over in columns. So it is really incentivizing continuing to grow as a teacher and in your, inside your profession. That is what the contract's about, um, in a nutshell. There's miscellaneous stuff with regards to retirement and some other things that were all, um, negotiated and so forth.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So for teachers to have their professional learning and you talk about continuing their growth, right? Because research changes constantly and we have to stay current with research, right? Cause that's super important. What we know works, we gotta be able to provide that for the teachers. So was there course reimbursement put into the contract so that we can help teachers pay for them to get a master's or a CAGS, um, or an EDD if they wanted it? So we're, we're asking for them to, to be able to move up in the steps. We've given them, we've built in, it sounds like we've built in steps for loyalty and steps for, um, when they come in, right? But for us, for them to continue their education so that they can jump a step, they also need to go back to school. And so is that in the contract also that reimbursement is in there?
Yes, there's, there always has been.
That was always there.
Okay.
What was tweaked was the criteria around what the district would approve and give you credit for.
Gotcha.
Because there has been an influx, as you know, of organizations that promise you three credits worth on a Saturday. And what we want, if you're getting three college credit worth of PD, we want it to be three college credit worth of graduate PD, which means you probably couldn't complete it on a Saturday. So that was more of the conversations around was if you, credits have to mean a certain thing and have to meet a certain criteria if, if you're going to count it towards your PD and, and your growth and your steps.
Most of those sing- single, single courses, right, where you get three credits for professional learning aren't being put into a program, right? So people would have to be, any teacher would have to come in and say, I'm going into a graduate program. Is that part of the SAU?
We did explicitly say that, but the criteria listed, you would see on any syllabus in a college course.
And so they could have a plus 15. I guess that's what I'm.
Yes, you could have a plus 15.
And not have a degree, but you could get a step for a plus 15.
Yes.
Okay.
So yes, and in it, yeah, like she said, the criteria is more defined and through this, you end up going through a process through the district to get your course approved and that sort of thing. So you'll know, um, if the funds are available for the reimbursement, um, if you've already done what you needed to. And so all that can more or less get approved through a, through a process that wasn't as well-defined, uh, prior to this.
Excuse me, is there a set amount for reimbursement?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what's, what's the upper limit for a year?
So, um, I believe this collective bargaining agreement is three courses, three, four credit courses at the UNH rate per credit.
So they pay for the whole thing?
You pay up, pay for three college courses in a, in a school year for a teacher, yep.
That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, so right, if you, if you managed it correctly, you know, if, even if it took you four years and you managed it correctly, it would allow a teacher to be able to get another degree.
To get another degree at the town's expense and get a raise in salary at the town's expense.
Yep, that's pretty typical. You would be hard.
Not, not in any other industry, it isn't typical.
No, but in education, I think you would be hard pressed to find a collective bargaining agreement to not have tuition reimbursement for teachers because they are the only profession that creates all other professions, our educators. So we want them to continue to get professional development. The students' brains are changing, that is showing up in their classroom. They, they have to have the tools to educate anyone who shows up in their classroom.
The, the research behind it is an absolute have-to.
Yep.
So we have, we have seen so much change in the last five years in, in, in how the brain learns, how kids learn, how we learn as adults. Um, that research has to be forefront in all that we're doing. And even in curriculum design, it's absolutely critical. With that being said, schools that I know of all have tuition reimbursement. Most of them, if they're large enough, can actually make, you know, they have cohorts.
Yep.
So we'll say, if we can get 20 people, we'll cut the cost in half for you and then the cut, the cost on the teacher is half and then the school ends up paying for half or something like that. So it's very typical that professional learning is, is definitely given through most districts.
We, we don't want our educators to be stagnant, just as we wouldn't want the medical profession to be stagnant. They are constantly getting updated on research and best practices and that is, that is really what the field of education does as well.
They have to get.
The medical profession, they, they pay for it.
Well, or they're attached to universities, so they don't always pay for their own. So I guess that could be a different de- debate.
Only if you worked.
Yeah, only if they were fat.
They have to get a grade no lower than a B for their reimbursement too.
Well, everybody gets A's and all A's now anyway, so.
Really? I mean, I have a college student and I don't think she's getting all A's. But I didn't need to put her out there on the spot.
Well, I can put mine too out there, yeah.
Alright, um.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On these, uh, on this CBA increase of 111,000, what's the percentage increase from the previous year that that 111,000?
Comes out to about 3%.
3%?
3, something percent. Uh, if you look.
Now, how do you get, if the operating budget changes is 4.19% and the CBA is 3%? That's how you get to your 7.47%?
Yeah, 3.7%, yeah, that's exactly it.
And what were the other sending towns? Like how close are we to other sending towns?
Middle.
Middle?
Most of the spots were middle of the road. We are not at the top, but we're competitive for, um, and Andy can speak, we're competitive for recruiting new teachers to come into the field. That's where we're more competitive, but as you go up, we're kind of even, middle of the road.
Yeah, we're, eh, on the upper end, we are middle compared to some schools, we're below.
Salary, salary.
Yeah, salary-wise, we're, we're below, in some instances, not a significant amount or not an insignificant amount. Um, but we're also not the lowest. So, we're, we're kind of in the middle. Um, in some aspects, we are very similar comp-wise to like at Kensington and to, uh, New Fields. Uh, we're not nearly as, as high as some of the Exeter or the Stradons. So it's, um, it kind of, kind of sits nicely where we, where we are as a school, I think in general. We've got a bunch of teachers here that I assume have looked through the contract as well. If you guys have any input, you want to, feel free.
Andy, I had a question. So in the years of experience, we were, um, you know, as we progressed through the years, one through 12.
This is the old one.
This is the old one, yep. Um, we were at, at the old contract, we're at like a 4.5% increase, steps one through 10.
Yep.
Now we're at a 3.7 for those steps.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to see, like, what does the scale look like going this way? So you have your, um, cause I didn't get a scale. So are there any increases here, like moving this way?
Um, and that's where.
Um, this is, um, the C, that, that CBA.
Oh, okay.
Um, in the fiscal year '24, um, this is what they're on right now, the last contract. So this is now 3.7 instead of 4.5, but I just wanted to see what the increase this way was for their, you know, advancing their education.
I know she love, I don't, I wanted.
I asked.
I, I, I.
And she said remind.
No, no, I, I, I have this.
Okay.
And excuse everybody, I gotta find it quick.
2% when you went across?
Uh, no, not always.
Um, I can maybe ask you, Renee, another question.
Yes.
Potentially while he's looking and hopefully I don't distract you, but, um, it talks about substitute language for teachers giving up their prep to sub or adding.
Yep.
So, hmm, that was just like a brief, I didn't know if you could speak to that a little bit more in there.
Yes, so if a, if a teacher gave up a prep here to cover another classroom, cause we were short subs, they would get their, I believe, this is where I get tricky. I think they get their per diem for that hour. Is that right, Andy?
It's not a flat rate?
Uh, no, I, I wasn't part of the conversation.
Oh, is it, is it based on a formula based off their salary? It's just not a flat rate?
Per diem?
I thought it was their per diem broke down to that hour.
Is that their per diem rate?
Yeah, per diem per hour.
Why would you get paid if you were already being paid?
Because you're guaranteed a prep period, and if you're giving up that prep period, that means you're gonna do that work at another time, right? So all teachers are given a prep period. And so that's the time that they're planning, or they're in PLCs, or they're doing stat. Like, they're doing things that are um, part of their contractual agreement. So if they're, if they say, I'll do my planning or my grading at another time, and I'll go cover for another teacher because we're short sub staff, they actually are doing it outside of their contract. Am I explaining that correctly?
Yes.
Yep.
So this other time, would that be what they would do at home?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it might.
And also, keep in mind that um, this is essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, this is essentially in lieu of hiring a sub, right?
This would be in place of not finding a sub.
Yes.
Not finding a sub.
So we would've had to pay a sub for this, too. So the um, I keep opening the wrong file.
Well, technically, it would, they'd only be covering maybe, say, like a class. So I think really who would benefit from this would be like the students.
Yes.
Because they would still have that teacher instruction, and maybe that para, you know, could work with other students that need help. And I think it could be huge for um, the learning loss.
All right, I got it here.
Has there ever been talk about hiring a full-time sub, having in, in the building?
Yeah. Um, prior to, that was a trend other buildings did. We didn't put it in this budget because the likelihood of finding someone, we're still short of para.
Well, and how often, I mean, percentage, we're so small, like.
Yeah.
If it's one person out, two people out?
We average one and a half a day.
One and a half a day?
Yep.
We average thirty.
Yeah.
Like, I know the um.
Thirty people all the day.
The co-op, the high school and the middle school, I think they struggled, I think they got one position filled, and then they struggled to get a second. And now I do think they have some permanent subs, but they really, still probably don't have as many.
No.
As they need.
All right. So um, going back to your question, um, just so everybody can see this, and probably see it too. You've got the columns, these are yours of experience, and then as you move over this way, this is um, essentially status with regards to education, BA fifteen, BA thirty, masters, or BA forty-five, et cetera. So when you go from a BA to BA fifteen, and then also thirty, you, that step is a two point five each from a fifteen, and then from a fifteen to a thirty, it's a two point five percent increase. Yeah, in one column. Um, when you move from a thirty to either a masters or a BA forty-five, and then along down the low, r- long down the line all the way to a forty-five, that's a four percent increase. That puts.
How does all this figure in with a three percent increase with the CBA agreement? Or is this in addition?
That is, so you take the salary that everybody is making now, this, this new change, the difference in everybody's salary, retirement, and everything like that comes out to one hundred and eleven thousand as opposed to what the current contract would be.
I'm talking about percentage increase in pay. Is it the two point five or whatever you just had here plus a three percent?
After, that's the second year. So that one hundred and ten is with the new grid with, as everything stays the same as staff, as it is, putting them in the new grid, it's gonna cost the taxpayers that much. And then, assuming every teacher moves down a step because they stay another year, that is the, the um, the three point seven. Now, staff moving along the right side where they get an additional raise isn't guaranteed each year, and staff members usually don't come back in after one year with a, you know, BA fifteen. So that, that's not guaranteed every year. That is, they earn over a course of time. I, I'm submitting all my credits. I wanna be, I wanna go on a track change to HR. And that, that's not necessarily from year to year. That's, I've done a, a, a coursework over the last couple of years.
Right.
I want a track change.
So, so let me give you an example. So teacher X is year three at a BA fifteen. The current contract has them at fifty-three thousand, three ninety-three. The new contract, um, sorry, next year, had they just moved from step three to step four with more, year more experience, their salary would be fifty-five, seven ninety-seven. Okay? In this new contract, their salary is going to be fifty-seven, seven twenty-six.
So that's more like an eight or a nine percent increase over.
Well, and, and that's why you see a bigger jump in year one, because what we did is the very first step, we brought up.
To attract.
To attract. But to make a stable budget going forward, so for instance, each step previously was four point.
Um, each step previously was, where are we?
Four point five percent. Every year is a four point five percent, right? Now, each step is a three point seven.
Three point seven.
So the grid economically shrunk a little bit, right? We brought up the base. We brought down the top end a little bit as far as percentage increases from year to year. But then we're incentivizing education moving forward and that sort of thing. In the end, the, the two numbers that you kinda look at when we compare everybody else is the top left, which would be year one, no, or just your standard bachelor's, that's fifty thousand, five hundred. That's right in the middle of everybody.
Yeah.
You look at the top number, which is MA forty-five, year twelve, basically you max out on everything. That's ninety-two, five seventy-seven. That's also right in the middle of anything. And even probably a little bit lower, like Kensington's one oh seven, I think, at that age, or at that step. And somewhere around in there, if I remember correctly. It's definitely over a hundred. Um, and so we're kind of in the middle of everything with this, specifically with regards to other comp towns, Kensington, New Fields, that sort of thing. We are well below the Exeter's and the Stradons.
And did I see that there's a increase for longevity? So when they, is longevity different than the twelfth step? There were two line items there. One was longevity.
Yeah, so.
And then one's the twelfth step, and that's your highest step.
Yes, so the um, the longevity was, there was this weird thing where for the first ten years, your longevity was one twenty-five, and then every year after that, it was one fifty. And we just made it one fifty. In the end, the accounting difference is probably, you know, it's, it's pretty.
So a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
Right? So they got a check for lon- for longevity at ten years?
Yeah.
And then at fifteen, the formula changed, so.
Yeah, that's what it was.
The formula changed, eh, and so this just simplifies it.
Yeah, and then we also, there was um, what was the other thing that we got rid of? The s-.
Crap, I can't remember that off the top of my head.
Um, but there's, there's a change in the retirement, the payout days for the sick.
Okay.
Um, but along with that, um, you have the existing contract.
Yes, I do. Right here. To an- to answer. What's the twelfth step? So what's, what, what's the, when you hit your twelfth step, is that another payout? That was my, like, so there are two line items there.
Oh, so, so you hit the twelfth step, but basically you're stagnant, right?
Right, right, you can't move again.
You can move over a little bit.
Not everyone on the twelfth step gets longevity, because longevity means you've been with us for ten years. We could've hired you at five, and you're not getting. So that's where the second piece came in, that, that Andy negotiated.
Yeah, so essentially, there's a yearly stipend that goes into this um, that doesn't get added onto the base salary. So your percentage increase as you move down, basically, your salary doesn't run away, right? So, I mean, cause if, if you've had a teacher that's been here twenty-five years, and they're getting a four percent raise each time, you're making two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Right.
There's multiple reasons why that's an issue.
Yeah, right.
So, um, so what that does is, you know, it, it, it gives a little bit of, you've been here a long time. You've made it a step, or sorry that, you know, that you're stuck essentially here, but there's a bit of a stipend to try to make up.
Well, at least cola.
The cola?
Cola, yeah.
Well, but also keep in mind, the cola on this, so in this, this is, this is a, another thing to talk about. The cola from one grid year to the next is one point five.
Mm-hmm.
Percent.
One point five percent, um, which is um, which is good for the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
It's um, it's lower than it was in their la- last contract.
Yes.
Uh, and then no cola this first year.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, I mean.
The, there's not a real cola this first year, that's just a change in the grid.
Yeah.
And so.
So a teacher could get a four percent increase because they were here for an extra year. Plus they get one and a half percent as a cola.
It's three seven, and the one and a half is a cola.
One and a half.
Yeah, but keep in mind, the previous, it was between one and two with a four, three, or four, seven.
I can tell you.
Four five, sorry. I keep forgetting that number. Four five cola, so, so.
But they haven't received any, I could be wrong on this. I'm a rookie.
They, they took a one.
They, there was one year that they, there was nothing?
Uh, it was a one percent across the board.
One across the board, okay.
So it's, there's a bump this year, but it's, it's a more stable across the board moving forward. And, and you see, you see that in year two, three, and four. So, um, and it, it really incentivizes growth in education, and we've got a lot, a lot of young teachers here. Some of them are getting back up to a, a salary that matches some of the other districts.
So how um, much is that longevity yearly stipend?
So if you're at step twelve.
Yep.
The stipend is um, to equal a three point seven increase. So if the cola is one point five, it's the difference, is three point seven minus one point five, that is what you would get at a step twelve.
Key is, it does not add to the base hour.
But it doesn't add to your base salary.
So it's a separate check.
So it's a separate check.
Okay.
And so it's.
Never to exceed three point seven.
Yeah, and, and that's the, that's the key to that is, as far as it, it's compensation for the fact that you're really, otherwise you'd be getting one point five percent, right, every year. So it's gonna get it. But again, we can't have, we can't have salaries that are running through the roof, you know, still held to that.
We, to be competitive, you have to look at the cost of living on the seacoast. You have to look at student loans. You have to look at professional learning in its true, true space, right? Um, we can't attract, you know, attracting teachers right now is extremely difficult.
Mm-hmm.
Extremely difficult.
And we could have a step twelve, go take a pay raise by going to another district, like, we wanna keep them. We've invested in them, invested in our community. It's a, it's a motive to have them stay here with us.
And so that's where the longevity and everything comes in. But it's a, I, I think it's a good mix of uh, good for the teachers and good for the tax.
It feels more balanced.
It, it, it really does.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Right.
The, Tiffany, the answer is, they would be, from my notes, they would be paid whatever their hourly rate would be calculated based on their per diem if they substituted for an hour.
Okay.
I'll confirm, confirm that, but that's what I have.
Okay. Um, and then also, let's see, I have like a few more questions. Um, so significant revision of the reduction in force. So it looks like it's gonna be going by not only seniority, but certification committee work and degree status?
Yeah, so it's a rubric. And so there was really no language before, and if you read the old, it was maybe two sentences that it really. So this is really allows, it's a point system, and it really allows a deeper conversation about keeping, you know, someone based on merit and seniority and their commitment to the school, and how they participate in making it a joyous piece of that. So it's really similar to what is going in the other. It matches the RIF language that HR is negotiating or supporting the negotiating of in the other SAU sixteen pieces. And it's a discussion, and, and ended up, um, the, Andy's conversations actually really liked it, cause it, it's not arbitrary. It's really like a thoughtful point system to decide who would be cut.
Yeah, I mean, th- there's, there's two issues when you, if, God forbid, we have, ever have to go for a RIF. Um, and there's, the, the teachers have a legitimate issue that administrators are going to go after the highest salaries. Right? Because if you gotta cut salary, um, most senior persons likely making the most. That, that's a, that's where you're gonna go after. Or on the other end, um, seniority, you know, it's not always fair to, especially if we're hiring new and great teachers, um, to have to eliminate if we've just hired somebody, um, and because they just got hired, we've got it removed. So this is really a rubrics that takes into account seniority, um, there's been anything written up.
Yeah.
Um, also takes into account how much the teachers involved, which is how many committees they're on. Not necessarily how many committees, but really what it is, have you been on committees? If you haven't been on any committees, it shows up. If you're kinda doing some basic stuff, then those points get added to you and so forth.
So our evaluate, like, so when you're looking at this, right, you want your most skilled professionals in the building.
Yeah.
Period. That, that could look like anything.
Yep.
Your skilled professionals need to be the ones teaching our kids.
Yep.
Um, I think engagement, the commit- committee, call it whatever you want, engagement with, with the school is, is critical. And so this was, this was done at SAU sixteen or with you?
No, Andy negotiated it.
Okay.
Um, but um, it's similar to what is in other collective bargaining agreements. And, um, because the NEA that he, who he was negotiating was very, very familiar with it, and she has been seeing it. I will say that.
Okay.
And so it was a thoughtful conversation.
Sorry for all the questions.
Please.
This is, this is what this is for.
Right? Um, I'm so glad you did this. Um, so the retirement benefit here was amended, and now states an employee with ten years of service and fifty-five years of age may receive a retirement better benefit of fifty-five percent of their accumulated sick days up to a hundred days. So I feel like that was like potentially a big change unless I missed something in here.
Yes.
So I just didn't know what that was about.
That was a big change. Um, and what is it that we took out?
We took a lot of different pieces out.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
And so we just simplified it, and again, matching other collective bargaining agreements under SAU sixteen.
Isn't here?
Yeah, the, so, so it was, um, I don't know, this wasn't either. Was it under retirement?
It's under retirement.
I think I might've circled something.
Oh, there we go, okay. All right, so, yes, this went away as part of this.
Okay. Does it stand or come out? Never mind.
Yeah.
So that came out?
So what, what used to be is, um, there was a retirement stipend equal to four hundred dollars for every year of service within the district. So if a teacher had been here for uh, ten years, it's a, basically it was a four thousand dollar stipend. Um, and then the sick days uh, were fifteen sick days. Um, and so what we're doing instead is um, fifty-five percent of sick days up to a hundred. fifty-five percent of sick days up to a hundred days. There's, there's a few reasons why this is beneficial. The main one is, if a teacher has a lot of sick days accumulated, it means they've been here. And so you're kind of rewarding the fact that they've been here, they're not using up their sick days and that sort of thing. And then the offset is, you know, we took out the four hundred, otherwise, that's a really big retirement payout.
Well, you also know, right? So everyone who has a hundred sick days or whatever, up to a hundred sick days, you're gonna be able to budget that much easier than the other one.
Yeah.
Much easier.
So, um, so yeah, there was, um, some of the give and take that, that went along, but, um, I, I feel it's a very, it's rewarding, you know, obviously if somebody gets sick, it's, you know, you can't always help that, but it's also, um, beneficial to the school for teachers to not use up their sick days all the time.
So they would get ten years, so the hundred days, that's at their per diem rate still, yep?
Yes.
Fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five percent of-
Of their per diem rate.
No, fifty-five, fifty-five percent of whatever they have in sick days, they get fifty-five percent up to a hundred sick days.
Okay.
So fifty-five percent of a hundred is what they would be paid out on their per diem if they had a hundred sick days every time.
Okay.
And that would be their hourly rate?
It would be their, their rate per day.
Per day.
Per day. So we would pay them for fifty-five days total.
After ten years, and they have to be fifty-five?
Yep.
There was some other things. Uh, the overall sync, sick bank leave, sick leave bank was, uh, increased and modified a little, but in general, that doesn't really impact the budget much, much because that's shared sick leave within the teachers.
It's donated sick time.
It's donated, donated sick time. I think that's kind of the big stuff. Again, does anybody comment?
Is this all gonna be on the website, or how do we get a hold of this information?
Um, that is a very good question. I don't know when we can release the polls.
Well, it is my understanding, HR does not release, um, the full collective bargaining agreement until the town passes it. Because right now, it's-
How do you know if you gotta pass it if you can't get a hold of it?
What you see on the warrant article is what you can approve, which is the expenditure of funds. So on the warrant article, you're gonna see the, the funds across the bottom, and you're gonna vote to whether or not you're going to, um, you agree to expending those funds over the next course of years to fund the public education.
Again, if you just have the warrant article, if you don't have the, the collective bargaining agreement, how can you vote?
Like, itemized pieces, that's what you're looking for, yeah.
I am sympathetic to that argument, to be blunt. Um, I, I want to ask more questions about that, too. So, um, I will keep you updated as I get more information.
You wanna, the, so the question I could bring back to Dr. Azwell is, you wanna know what you're getting for your money, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can bring that back, be, I can bring that question back, because that was something we talked about.
Yeah, I wanna see where every dollar is being spent here. It was like, three years ago, at the deliberative session, under bereavement, you had, I don't know, four or five days for second cousins. And, and there was nothing there for aunts and uncles.
I, I think we modified that section as well.
We did, fixed that as well.
By the way.
That needs to be defined a little bit.
But how can we vote for something, um, you couldn't change it at the deliberative session, and then your people go and you change it afterwards.
But just from, from a process standpoint, just remember, what the town is voting for is to expand funds. You're not voting for line items of a collective bargaining agreement that the board chair negotiated in good faith with the teachers here. Though, so I just wanna make sure that's the, do I understand why you're asking those questions a hundred percent? Where's my money going?
Yeah.
What am I paying for? Um, I just, from, just telling you what I, what I've heard and understood is, they don't get to write the collective bargaining agreement. But what I'm hearing you say, we're not asking for that piece, we just wanna know what we're investing in when we, when we say yes to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars increase for next year. So I will bring that back and try to get something for the public to look at. Is it, I'll do my best to try to get that back.
The grid you had for the, for the teachers.
I, I, I agree with you.
Yep.
Let's just say that. Be, be, before, before agreeing to do anything, I wanna make sure I understand why, why information is, or not, is not available.
Yep.
Is it, is that fair?
Sure.
I, I want to say that there are other district grids that are available. It does become public knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I don't know that, I don't know that-
When does it come public?
When, when would be my question. I do believe it does become public.
Once the contract-
Contract is signed by the teachers.
Well, once the contract, I mean, for sure, once the contract is approved, it absolutely is public, it was in there. I, I thought that, I thought that it would become public once it's been ratified. Um, I, I'm not sure, it appears I was wrong, so.
We both thought that, and that was the information I got back, but I'll, I'm happy to talk to Dr. Azwell about this again. Very happy to.
So.
I understand the concern.
I-
One hundred percent.
Okay, yeah.
Totally understand. So the action from the board tonight would be whether or not you wanna put those numbers on the warrant article um, that represent the collective bargaining agreement that Andy negotiated with the Teacher Association of East Kingston.
What wording do you need?
Um, a motion to put the collective bargaining agreement and, um, the numbers in front of you on a warrant article for the town of East Kingston to vote on.
All right, I, uh, make a motion to, uh, put the collective bargaining, bargaining, bargaining agreement and the proposed twenty twenty-five budget as shown, um, here in front of us as warrant articles, um, to propose to the town. All-
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so technically, this is just a CBA. This is just a CBA portion, and then we'll do like the full total budget. After the town hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But right now, we just have a, we, the board is gonna put the, the numbers in the warrant article around the CBA on a, on a warrant article for the, for the town to vote on. And then what is the bottom line for the budget that you want to send to the citizens to vote on?
So is there any way to communicate the difference be, like, the, the difference between the default budget and this budget, right?
Yes, we will get heavy into that in the deliberative.
Wow.
There'll be a presentation, uh, public hearing and a presentation, okay.
Yeah, that's the deliberative, which, um, just to get it out there now, unlike in years past, we're actually gonna hold the school deliberative prior to the town deliberative, we're doing it eight in the morning. So, um, I believe that's been posted.
Yep, it's been posted.
But, um, just make sure everybody's got it, spread the word, so forth.
It's early in the morning.
It's not that early.
Anyway.
Sun's up.
All right, uh, what else do we have here?
I just had a quick question while you're looking, Andy, about the support staff handbook. Um, I just was curious as to who put it together, um, or who did the editing, I'm sorry.
Which parts? Because it was a team.
Oh, it was just a team, or just who the team was, I'm just, I was just curious.
So business office, East Kingston principal, myself, and Heather Murray, Director of HR.
Nice, okay, yeah.
Did have, have the support staff looked at it?
They have not seen the, the one in your, one proposed for next year in your packet, no.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was cleaned up and stuff, I just was just curious.
Yep.
Pretty good.
What, uh, do we have any old business?
I definitely wanna go into non-public.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we, I do hope that you make a motion to put the bottom line of the budget on to the, because we did the collective bargaining agreement, but you have to propose a budget to go to the public as well. We don't have that final number in our motion yet. So are you going with the proposed budget that we proposed?
Oh, yeah, I thought, I thought I put that all in.
Or, is-
That's a different warrant, correct?
That's, yeah, so there's, there'll be two warrants, there'll be two warrants. It'll be the budget for this amount, which is, you know, which is a, a four point one nine percent increase. So we, proposed budget is three million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
So is my understanding that we don't approve that full amount until after we go to the public hearing? Because we need to hear-
You're right.
What the public is gonna be like.
No, Tiffany's right, totally, that is right, you could not do anything without parent input, so, sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
That's okay.
You're right.
Thank you.
So we don't need the second warrant?
We don't, we don't.
Good job.
I know, I made the motion last year after the public hearing, so-
Nope, you're right.
Just gonna make sure we do that part first.
All right.
So we're going into, we're gonna go into the public.
Is there any other thing?
Any other thing?
I'm just, I'm beside myself on this bereavement thing. That, you know, when it was written up, there's no aunts and uncles, now you're telling me you fixed it afterwards. How can you have a collective bargaining agreement?
Well, we didn't fix it afterwards, we fixed it in the proposed budget that you'll get to vote on. So the language is different.
The new collective bargaining agreement that we just get through, we just got through-
You fixed it for that?
Yes, that's, that's what we meant.
I, I thought you meant it was fixed right after the meeting.
No, 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 well, once-
Because it made no sense.
Yeah, we cleared that.
We, we, we cleared it.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I specifically remember your comments during it, and so, we, we-
All right.
Yeah, when I say, when I say we fixed it, it was in this new, uh, contract, it's, it's been modified.
I just took it the other way, that, you know, you went back after the meeting and said, oh, yeah, we screwed up here, so let's change it.
No, 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 we, we can't do that, I wasn't a board member at that time, but yeah, we can't do that.
And you had no feedback from teachers that were not allowed to, to go to a, you know, get time off for aunts or uncles?
I-
That'd be great.
Well, in it, it also says at the principal's discretion.
Oh, did it?
I thought it said something around that, or at least it does now, it's so down now.
I'd like to see the current one, if you could, if you could ask Dr. Azwell, she could send me that.
Well, the current one's right there, what is the, the old one?
Oh, the old one.
The old one, what, does it have, does it have for the principal's discretion, or with the principal's approval, other?
I don't recall that at all.
All right, let's see. Who's more important, the cousin or the aunt?
No, I just named everybody at ten thousand.
You had second cousins?
I don't, I don't think it was a value statement, I think it was an oversight.
Sorry.
Versus a value statement.
I did the same thing, too, but.
Brandon, you have discretion now, right?
Let's see, this is-
It's right here.
And we changed the wording on the retirement, so.
Pretty common.
Get this on out.
I think so, yeah. Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
It's changed.
Yep.
It doesn't say at the-
Oh, it does not.
Then I think that might have been what we added this year as well.
It does not say that, um, Brandon could, it doesn't say discretion.
Was Brandon here for this contract?
Yep.
I was not part of the negotiations for, oh, no, it was my-
First year?
First year, yeah.
Yep, so that wording is gonna be different, too.
Yes, yes, it is, it is different.
Instead of having a big, long list and leaving people out?
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact, what it was, but, um, you're-
Well, the thing that got me was the second cousins. And it was, it was a substitution, it was more than one day.
Yeah, your, your, your comments were, um, taken into account. Maybe that's, that's where you put it. All right, uh, do we have anything else? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, Larry's, this is his wife, she's a little like, um, she'll give you his number and she'll, and he'll be delighted.
His wife's a teacher, or an ex-teacher, retired teacher, I should say.
Yeah, I think the kids would get a kick out of sea creatures.
Thirty-two years in special ed in Derry.
I have seen this in other schools. Yeah, I think they would get a few too.
Just not, I don't remember the name.
So where in Derry? Because that's where I am. That's Mike, um, Pinkerton, so, and I taught in Derry for a long time, so.
I have, yeah, I have no idea where she was in Derry.
Well, she was there for thirty-two years, because she just retired a, you know, a couple eighteen months ago.
Yeah.
But she is int- is interested in substituting occasionally. She just, I think she's busy, she just hasn't got down to it.
She's doing her thing.
So if you talk to her about it, I encourage you to come and sign up.
We get a commission if she decides to.
Outstanding. So they're spending public funds, we need a motion for that, I'm sure.
We're gonna be throwing a brick through my window.
No, no, thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas, thank you both.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to go into non-public.
All right. Roll call vote, and I will take notes.
I'd make a motion to go into non-public per RSA ninety-one eight-three, specifically I in this case.
Here's what I found, I'll second.
Uh, all in favor, roll call, Andy Harum?
Tiffany?
Kirsten?
And, all right, we are out of non-public. I'm gonna call this meeting to a close at eight oh one PM. Thank you.